Should be added by 1:05, 1:15.
No, you shouldn't say that.
If anybody determines they've got the sinking chair.
You think you got it?
No, I don't. No, this thing's hanging in there.
The market.
Yeah, at the end of the meeting, remind me and I'll switch it out with this one for the time being.
That's a Jim's chair.
Huh?
That's a Jim's chair.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's perfect. Yeah, don't tell her, don't do it on purpose. There'll be a secret mark.
I think they do too.
They'll, it's one which your bounce.
It is worse than all others.
There's one that's really good.
It is 1:00 PM on Tuesday, February 1st. It's for our regular city commission meeting. And I'm clerk. Do we have a court?
Yes, mayor.
All right. This time it is turned for Commissioner Euler for pledge allegiance in education.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow. Heavenly Father, we come to you today and ask you to bless our time together. Help us make wise decisions that benefit our community as a whole. Father, we are grateful for the promise of moisture and we ask that you keep us safe during the pending snowstorm. Be with the street department and airport crews as they work hard to keep our roads and runways clear. Be with the first responders as they respond to calls over the next few days. Fill us with your grace as we pray in your name. Amen.
All right. Is there any changes to the meeting, the minutes from last time?
No.
All right. Saying none, we will stand as approved. Next is public comment, and again, this is a time for public to come up and discuss anything that they would like to discuss, as long as it's not already on the agenda and we can get to those. When that time comes, we have allotted five minutes per spokesperson, and if you come up and talk, please state your name when you do. So anybody here for public comment? All right. No public comment. So I think we're on to item seven.
Mayor and commissioners, the only items listed on the agenda are references to written reports that were included in your packet. If you have any questions on those, we'd be happy to try to answer those. I do want to take the opportunity to kind of catch up on introducing you to some new staff members in some new positions. And this might not be comprehensive. Anybody I leave out will catch up on, in the next meeting too. But I'd like you all to meet our new parks superintendent, Nolan Till. And Nolan is in the audience. And Nolan, I know this is putting you on the spot a little bit. Do you want to come up and introduce yourself and just kind of give a little brief overview of where you come from?
Yeah, definitely. I'm Nolan Till, obviously, like Matt said. Parks superintendent. I come from Colorado. I actually worked in the town of Parker, southeast suburb of Colorado. Was out there for, I think I told Aaron, I'm like, yeah, like five years. And he's like, that's not possible. I'm like, oh, maybe it was like 12 years, I guess. Time flew out there. But originally from Iowa, so Midwest kid, and I had my wife's families from here, and she really wanted to get back here, and I was okay with it. So we started looking and lucked out, so.
Well, welcome.
Welcome.
Glad you're here, Nolan.
Thank you.
Welcome, Nolan. We're glad to have you. Three other appointments which were announced earlier in the week that I want to draw your attention to. You know these people, but they're now in an official new full-time capacity. Ellie Vople, Human Resources Director, Jared Coleman, Finance Director, and Emily Burns, Assistant Finance Director. So congratulations to the three of them. You'll, as I mentioned, you know them already. They've been with our organization for a while. And you'll definitely be seeing more of them in the future as well. We're excited to have some of these vacancies rounding out and taking shape, and excited about the future of the organization. Meetings of note, just a reminder, this Thursday is the training. I believe Mike's driving in, so the risk of that being delayed because of flights or canceled because of flights is slim. And I don't know that we've touched base with Mike yet, but I'll try to do that later today just to make sure he's getting out on the road early enough to get safe here and be able to do your training. And then your goal-setting retreat is March 3rd, and that'll be at the Fennep Center. That's Scott. Everything covered. We're ready for the appropriation ordinance. If approved, it would be ordinance number 2548-2022A.
I move to approve appropriation ordinance number 2548-2022A.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any comments? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that passes.
In item 10A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a resolution establishing the time and date of a public hearing for the purpose of considering the redevelopment project plan for Western Kansas Corridor LLC, tax increment financing redevelopment district located in Finney County. If approved, it would be resolution number 2900-2022. So the Finney County Economic Development Corporation has provided the background for this, and quite simply, this step establishes a public hearing date and time. That date and time would be March 15th at 1:30 PM in conjunction with your city commission meeting. And I'll turn it over to Lana if she's got anything else to add.
Matt covered it pretty well. This is just one of the steps we have to take. Again, as a reminder, this is not located within the city of Garden City, but you are the entity that has the authority to declare a tax increment finance district.
I'm glad that the county commission knows that. I'm just kidding.
I'll move to approve the resolution.
Commissioner Ortiz moves. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Item B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a resolution of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds for Providence Ethical Investments LLC for the development of a medical office building and related space. If approved, this would be resolution number 2901-2022. Providence Ethical Investments is constructing a medical office building on East Mary Street. The company submitted required information for consideration of the issuance of industrial revenue bonds, which would include an exemption on sales tax for qualifying expenses related to the project and consideration of a partial ad valorem property tax abatement in accordance with the city and county tax abatement policy. FCDC facilitated the preparation of a cost-benefit analysis. This was actually performed by Triplet Wolf-Garretson, and formal review by the tax abatement committee based on the level of capital investment, number of jobs created. The project qualified for consideration of a 20% partial ad valorem property tax abatement. The tax abatement committee comprised of elected and staff representatives from Finney County, City of Garden City, Garden City Community College, and USD 457 unanimously recommended approval. A memo summarizing the IRBs, summarizing the findings of the committee is attached, and also attached is support information regarding active IRBs in Garden City and Finney County. The attached resolution before the city commission today refers to the 20% tax abatement for the project in a manner which complements Kansas State statute, which is actually a 100% abatement and then a supplemental payment in lieu of taxes by the company that reflects the actual amount of the abatement approved. As described in section five of the resolution, Providence Financial Investments LLC will be required to make payments in lieu of taxes in the amount of 80% of the taxes that would be due on the project in the absence of the tax exemption. The resolution does not authorize the tax exemption or approve the payment in lieu of taxes agreement. Those approvals will occur on a future date after holding the required public hearing on the tax abatement and after the project is close to completion but before the bonds are issued. So your alternatives are to approve the resolution of intent to issue IRBs or to not approve the resolution of intent. We recommend approval, and there's no cost related to passing this resolution.
Did I hear a motion?
I move to approve resolution number 2901-2022.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion about this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
And mayor, I wanted to ask a question. Why Lana's still here. You know, they talked about BIDs. Have we ever used those business incentive districts, or is our CID the same thing? I just was curious about.
Yeah, in the pre-meeting, they mentioned the business improvement district. Business improvement district, community improvement district, very, very similar tools, just a different name. We typically call them community improvement districts when we establish them here, but obviously, you know, we've used those quite frequently.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, Lana.
Item 12A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a six-year lease agreement with Intelligent Marketing USA Inc. doing businesses as Turf Tank USA for a robotic painting machine for a total cost of $64,500. Aaron?
Afternoon, mayor and commissioners. The item you have before you is for a robotic athletic field painter. As you're aware, with the combination of the Parks Department and the Recreation Commission, the Parks Department took on the athletic fields that were formerly managed by the Recreation Commission. In addition to that, everybody seems to be aware that how difficult it is to fill staffing, especially seasonal positions. So there's quite a bit of painting that goes on in field marking, including baseball and softball fields. So one of the things that we tried to do to solve our labor issue is look at how to automate some of these things. And we demoed two products, the only two out there on the market. The one that's before you that we're recommending is Turf Tank. It is the higher-priced contract, but as you look through the overall pricing, because they include that 200 gallons of paint annually, that does save over time. Now, we chose the six-year model because Turf Tank is a six-year lease program. At the end of it, we would get a new one if we chose to continue, or we would own the robot. So there is something to be said over time if the robot went farther out. If we could get it 10 years, it would be even cheaper to use the tiny mobile robot. So just so we're clear about kind of the difference, they don't price it out the exact same. So it was kind of difficult to compare apples to apples. So we tried to find that linear path that says A to B on both of them. In reference checks, Turf Tank seemed to come back with very positive references, including an entity that we contacted that prior to this year used both and then exclusively chose to go to Turf Tank. We do anticipate it saving about 100 gallons of paint a year. That includes the addition of us adding things like logos, welcoming messages. The two logos would obviously be the city logo and the rec logo that we would have built into that machine that could be done at any time. Text, we can do any kind of text. So I would entertain any questions about either product.
Do they use the standard paint that you normally would use?
So the tiny mobile robot can use any paint. You would thin it. But there are only two recommended paint brands for the Turf Tank. Cost-wise, it's the exact same of what we're paying right now, which is right about $13 a gallon.
And then they provide the training for this, and then?
They do. They come out, they'll come out, physically set up all of our standard fields, train us how to use it, train us how to add fields if we need to add them, you know, later on down the line.
Aaron, so just going across what you've kind of tried to put together for us to go line by item or compare apples to apples. So like the paint costs a total of six years, and then under the tiny robot is $23,400. Under the Turf Tank, it's $7,200. I mean, that's quite a bit of difference on.
Because of the 200 gallons of paint that come free with Turf Tank.
Okay.
That's the difference.
Okay, yeah.
We, I mean, we do anticipate saving about 100 gallons a year, but that's, again, because the robot, well, you can set it and let it do its thing.
Yeah.
We do anticipate probably, you know, being a little fancier with welcoming messages for tournaments, putting some logos out.
I like, yeah.
That kind of thing.
Yeah, I like the fact that we could personalize those fields for an event or.
There's even the opportunity to sell sponsorships.
There you go.
Well, I appreciate the breakdown like you did this. This, I understand them not being apples for apples, and so I really appreciate you taking the time to really break it down like this. It helped a lot.
Well, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move that the governing body approve the agreement with the Intelligent Marketing USA Incorporated DBA Turf Tank for $64,500 and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Thank you, Aaron.
Thanks, Aaron. Good job.
Item B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve filling one expiring term and one partial term on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Aaron?
Mayor and commissioners, we had filled a board position with Misty Wheaton, but unfortunately, in the time it took us to nominate, get her approved, her work schedule changed. So we actually have two positions to fill. The two applicants are there, and we just kind of picked one to fill and one to be a full term. So the alternatives, you can, alternative one is what we recommend, but really one or two, however you see fit, for an approval to fill those vacated board positions, or obviously further direction. And of course, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I saw Isidro here. Do you want to come up and just introduce himself, any of the candidates?
Hi, everyone. My name is Isidro Marino, and I'm going to currently be on the Garden City Parks and Rec Board. I'd like to thank you all for inviting me. If you have any questions, I'll be willing to answer them, but I hadn't spoken here before because I was running for school board. But I'd say I'm from Los Angeles, California. I've been living in Garden City for six years. I've had family that have been living here for almost 40, 50 years. So I'm kind of acquainted by visiting for the last 20 or so years of my life. So I'd like to say thank you all for all you do, and I hope I have a successful my position.
Well, we're glad you're calling Garden City home now. I mean, you finally came home, so.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make the motion to appoint Isidro Marino to the term expiring in February of 2025, and Pritli Murthy to the term expiring in February 2026.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Thank you.
Item 12C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an appointment to the Police Citizens Advisory Board. Chief?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. What you have before you is a request for consideration and approval for one of our empty positions. We have two currently, Asian-American and social services community. And Garden City resident Alma Marufo has submitted an application to be considered for the social services vacancy. Her term, if she was appointed, would expire in December of 2025, and she is here to answer any questions and introduce herself if you'd like that.
That'd be great.
My name is Alma Marufo. I've been a resident of Garden City since 2018. I've been a social worker since 2016, and I used to live in Lewis, Kansas.
Well, welcome. Yeah, we're glad to have you. Thanks for serving.
Thanks for applying, yes.
Thank you for inviting me.
Thank you.
So alternatives are appoint Alma to fill the vacant social services position with her term expiring in December of 2025, or do not appoint and recommend that we continue to recruit.
I move that we appoint Alma Marufo to the citizens advisory, or for the social services position with a term expiring December 2025.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved in second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Can we have a picture, please?
Yeah.
I guess. I think it's all right.
Oh, we never include me, but is that?
I know you. You're all my favorites.
You're just saying that.
This is going to be the most organized address line. This will be the bright spot.
You're in the perfect picture.
You're flashing.
You know the word you said.
All right, on three. One, two, three.
Looks perfect.
This one looks perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We waited for it earlier. Thank you, guys.
The next item that shows up on the agenda is an executive session. We don't anticipate any action following the executive session. So if the commission would like to take care of the consent agenda item and then the commission reports, we can shut down the broadcast and conclude with an executive session. So that sets up item E, consent agenda. If nobody wants to pull any of those items off to discuss them separately, the appropriate motion would be to approve E 1 through 3.
I move to approve consent agenda items E 1 through 3.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. All right. Time for commissioner reports. Commissioner Euler?
It is 21 after. Good job. I enjoyed the pre-meeting. It's always nice when you can start seeing a plan come together, especially the comprehensive plan that has been worked on for so long. And it's just, I think it's fun to take a fresh look and just see where we can go. And I look forward to really, you know, seeing the report when it comes out. I want to thank all of the departments that helped with the snow removal last, or last week, and then in preparation for it this week. I was really pleased to see the brining being done, so just be careful. If we do end up getting snow, just make sure that today is the day to prepare. So like if you don't have bread and milk, now is the day, today is the day to go to the grocery store, not tomorrow, or the next day, so. And then congratulations to Jared, Emily, Ellie, and Nolan on promotions and new positions. We're excited to have you here in the, at the city. And there's actually a very nice article in the Telegram for you guys as well, so good job. That's all I have.
All right. Commissioner Hunter?
Wow, well, you actually left some things, so that's very nice. So thank you.
I was nice.
So I was really excited to see. The airport is being talked about lots of places. Everywhere I go, they talk about our airport and how important, I mean, it's going to be to our regionalization of what started here. So I also just wanted to comment on the report. It was excellent. So I'm super excited about the groundbreaking and everything taking place at the airport. I also want to say thank you and congratulations to Jared, Emily, and Nolan, and Ellie for the new positions and for you coming back, Nolan, to Kansas and bringing, your wife bringing you back. I'm not going to really count you as doing the work. It was her, so. We're excited about having you here, but, and so, and we want you to make this home, and so we're excited about what's happening. And we think there's some very exciting things after the pre-meeting today and all of the really neat ideas that our community has come up with. I think that's, the amount of engagement this has taken in place, I really appreciate the way they've really got the engagement, and that really means a lot to us. I would like to see when the tiny tank happens, I would like to either see a video or you invite us out to the inaugural use of that. I'm kind of excited about that. I've never seen, I've never had one of the Roombas or one of those automatic vacuums, so this kind of, when I read it, I thought, this must be like an upscale. But I guess those things are pretty expensive too, so I don't know. I do want to say thank you to Isidro and Alma for choosing to serve. You know, it's, it is an honor to have people like you who want to serve on these committees because your input means a lot to us as commissioners, and it means a lot to the community. And so what you bring to us, to the commission and to our community through your knowledge and your wisdom and your experience is going to make all the difference. So all those people who serve on the committees, we really appreciate that. I too also want to thank you for the incredible job that everyone did to clear the snow. I don't want to say that it's going to snow because then I just, I just, I'm not going to say it. But I'm looking forward to additional moisture if it happens, so.
Commissioner Sessa?
Yeah, I'd just like to welcome the new advisory board members. We do also have a number of positions open on advisory boards, so if you're interested in serving the community and helping out and helping our community move forward in a positive direction, please look at signing up for those open advisory positions that are available and open. The advisory boards do really help us, help us make better decisions as commissioners and actually help us move our community in a positive direction. Want to thank the community for helping the school district. I'm kind of, I never like to talk about the school district in this decision, but I'm going to a little bit right now. The state passed, or the state school board passed the temporary emergency authorized license for substitute teachers. Because of the situation we're in with COVID and everything, we have a high demand for substitute teachers. And so the state for the next, until June, has passed this temporary licensing, and we've seen a huge outpouring to help the school district in this manner. And we'd like, I just, from my standpoint, like to thank the community, organizations around the community for stepping up and helping the school district in this situation. You know, our mission at the school district is to provide a quality education to build responsible citizens. You know, our mission at the school district is to provide a quality education to build responsible citizens, and, you know, having people come in and help us out during the situation really helps us meet that mission, so thank you very much. And that's all I've got.
Commissioner Ortiz?
You guys left a few things for me. Um, yeah, just like to echo what everybody had said. Congratulations to those new, um, committee members. Thank you for your time and your service on that as well. So it's, it's exciting to see a lot of interest in those committees, though. I know, like, prior years, it's, it's been, um, hard to find somebody to, to help with those committees. So thank you for all who are interested. Went to the Finney County Economic Development, um, annual meeting, uh, this last week, and it was awesome. Um, I always kind of exaggerate on what's coming to Garden City, and, and, but like, if you go to some of these meetings where they talk about things that, that are coming to Garden City, the airport's one of those that is going to be huge, um, impact on Garden City. So there are lots of things coming, and I keep saying that, but, um, we'll see them soon, hopefully before I move, which I don't plan on moving, but we'll see. You never know what happens, but, um, yeah, thanks to this, um, you know, Roy, Cessna, your, your staff at the school district and, and those, um, committee members there, the, the school board. Thanks for their efforts, too. I hear that there's some personnel that, some good leaders that are leaving, um, and we just wish them well on their next journey, but, uh, we appreciate all they did for the school district, and, and, um, I know we're looking at, um, some new staff members here for the city, so it's been, I was able to go, you know, to join those interviews and get to know some of the people who are, um, are looking at the job, looking at moving here. So it was great conversations with those people that, uh, they, you know, if they moved, it was just exciting to, to talk about Garden City to them and, and, you know, just help them understand what we have to offer here. So good luck on those, um, people who are interested, so. And I think, uh, thanks to the school, also, like, we talked about the city who removes snow. The school district too, I mean, those kids that walk to school, those sidewalks get cleared. Um, I mean, I walked those sidewalks too, and, and it's, it's just great to be able to walk on concrete and not snow-filled sidewalks. So thanks for all of their work too as well. That's it.
All right, um, I'd like to congratulate Nolan, Ellie, Jared, and Emily as well. Thanks for taking a step up or, or joining the organization, and, um, heard good things about, um, all of you already and so far through this process. Also like to say that it was part of the process for, uh, hiring an assistant city manager. Um, that's a very large, comprehensive process. So thank you for everybody who took part in that and, and made it where we can, um, pick the best candidate from that. And, and we did really have some really, I mean, pretty much everybody who came that made that round where they came in person, um, was really quality, uh, candidates, and it'll be good to see, um, who comes out of that, um, to, to, to act as assistant city manager. Also, um, on Sunday, February sixth, is TET, the Vietnamese, uh, New Year's Celebration, and that will be beginning at one PM at the Garden City High School. Um, so they have a lot of activities planned, um, so if you're able to make that, make sure you, uh, make it out to that. And I think we are done with, uh, reports.
That sets us up for, uh, item twelve D. Staff is requesting governing body consider an executive session pursuant to KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B six pertaining to preliminary discussions relating to the acquisition of real property. And in addition to yourselves, I think Jennifer Cunningham, City Attorney, and myself, and that's probably it.
For how long, do we think?
Twenty minutes, maybe?
Twenty minutes? Do I hear a motion?
So moved. For going into executive session at one-thirty and leaving executive session at one-fifty. For twenty minutes.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, we will go into executive session for twenty minutes.